Called the District of Clearwater Regular Council meeting for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. to quarter. Are there any late items I have won? Anything else we would like to add to the agenda? So, under item 21 of the business, there will be the ratification of the email vote for Ten Resort, LPP, vote that we did last week, email, not doing anything. So, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with late items? Moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Sanford, all those in favor, and that passes. And I think you'll okay the right way out there. We're open. That could be here. Moving on to item four, Minister Order M192. I'm going to read this out loud for the recording. There's a recommendation that pursuant to Minister Order Number M192, the District of Clearwater is excluding in-person public attendance at this early 2nd, 2021, meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a matter adjacent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at the time. And the District of Clearwater is ensuring openness, transparency, and accessibility and accountability at this meeting, by the following means, this meeting will be recorded and a video of this meeting will be available on our district's website for viewing on demand on a non-demand basis. Can I get a move on to that for all this recommendation? Moved by Counselor Fizzle, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor, and that passes. Option of minutes, any errors or missions? Moving on to that second order. Moved by Counselor Aaron, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor, and that passes. Moving on to no unfinished business, no public affairs, statutory hearing, presentation. And we have on the Zoom Saturday, the implant, the development of the presentation on Clearwater, how we need. So, we're ready to go, or are we ready to record what's going on?
We are. So, Sammy, you'll be able to load your screen now. I'm going to.
Yes. Perfect. Perfect. Thanks, everyone. Hello, and thanks again for having me to your council meeting. Happy Groundhog Day for those of you who celebrate it. Very happy to be here. Wish I could be there in person, but unfortunately, due to restrictions beyond our control, it's not feasible today. So, I'm just going to share my screen. And Leslie, maybe you can let me know when it's popped up there. There it is. There it is. Perfect. Okay, great. Before I get going, I'll also say that I've got my colleague Jennifer Getz on the line. She worked intimately with the engagement feedback for this study. So, if there are some questions maybe that you have that I can't answer, I may defer to her if I don't have the information at my fingertips. Before I get going, I'd like to just acknowledge that McCollough Development Services operates on the traditional territory of the Lakhuangding, the Shretnum, and the Waseanic peoples whose historic relationships with the land continue to this day. And I'd also like to thank the Union of B.C. Municipalities, whose funding support made this project possible. There we go. Great. So, just getting into a bit about the project, as you all know from the first presentation, the District of Clearwater participated along with a number of other municipalities and electoral areas across the Thompson-Nicholay Regional District. This was really helpful. It allowed us to both collect information on your community as well as on your neighbors to enable some comparison and contrasting, as well as on your surrounding electoral areas, which have a lot to do with with your housing market. So, as you go through your report, you'll be able to see a lot of different information, and there are some regional summaries that will be made available through the regional district. So, briefly, now that we've got the final report to you, you'll notice a few things about the content of the report. The first is what we've included in the report and what is mandated by the provinces to give you information on what is happening in your community. That's local and regional information on demographics, households, incomes, economy, affordability, and we've also got information on who that's happening to. So, that's where you have your engagement data, your affordability analysis, and some information on which income groups and household types are struggling. What's not in this report is the next step, the how, so the implementation, where new housing should go, or the form or density that new housing should take. That's up to you to decide through your, the tools at your disposal, like your OCP, like your zoning bylaws, and by developing partnerships, community education, et cetera. If you're interested in sort of looking more at that next step piece, we've included along with the final package, a Housing Tools for Local Governments Guide. It's not entirely applicable to a community the size of the District of Clearwater, but there are many elements and tools within that short report that can give you sort of some ideas on where you could take the next few steps. So, along with that Housing Tools and Policy Guide, we've also included a number of other elements in your final report. The final package includes a number of appendices. So, you've got your full District of Clearwater Housing Needs Report. We've also included a Community Housing Summary, which is a four-page, highly infographic, very visual summary of the data for housing in the District of Clearwater that maybe was included in your agenda package. In addition, there are some indicators and monitoring guides, so you can look at specific indicators, and it gives some recommendations and guidance for your staff on how to continue to track housing conditions moving forward, recognizing that by the legislation, you will have to complete an update to this report within the next five years. There's also a full engagement summary throughout this presentation and throughout the report that you've received. I've included a lot of engagement feedback that's specific to the District of Clearwater. But if you're interested in the deeper dive and our full engagement study that we did throughout the region, we've included all of the responses, our survey, our questions, things like that, all of that in that report. And then lastly, there is an attached data tables appendix. That appendix is not necessarily useful to you as a decision maker. It's more for staff reference, and it's about, you know, checking the boxes that the ministry gives us and ensuring that your report is in complete compliance with their requirements so that no one's going to come and say, you didn't check this, like one small indicator box. So, it's all in there. So, getting on to the fun part, a bit about the findings. I'll try to blow through these because there's a lot in the report, but if you have any questions about the findings, please feel free to interrupt me, or at the end, we've got some time for for questions, and you can ask about a specific slide. So, I'd like to start by just saying that, you know, Clearwater is still reasonably affordable. You've got a relatively advantageous starting context. A lot of the communities across B.C. that we work in are struggling to catch up to what has become sort of a housing crisis situation. That's often the terminology that you hear in the newspaper or things like that. Clearwater, you're still, you're not quite there yet. Households making moderate to above moderate incomes are still able to afford a home, and overall housing conditions actually approved by some of our metrics between 2006 and 2016. You've also got a really strong economic environment, which enables people to, you know, still buy into homes in your district. However, there are still some concerning statistics that we collected. For example, 18% of your community is in core housing need, and 33% or fully one-third of your renters are in core housing need. You've got an aging population, like many communities across the region, and that's going to present a challenge and a need for different types of housing, especially housing with specialized supports. Rental availability continues to be a challenge, and regional trends indicate that rates of rentership are increasing, as well as resource development near your community is going to really impact your rental housing stock especially. And then lastly, looking at what's happening around you, housing markets are expanding. The lower mainland is expanding, Kamloops is expanding, and we'd expect that pressures from those communities may start to eventually come and impact you in Clearwater. So, the report should encourage action, not necessarily complacency. You've got time still, which is great, but lots of other communities thought they had time, and then all of a sudden, they didn't anymore. So, better to get started now than it is to waste. Going into some specifics, the big thing I want to point out is that your population is is growing in terms of demography, but it's also aging. And one of those, the ramifications of aging population is that household size is declining. So, the number of people who live in a home has been going steadily down. One thing you'll see that manifests in is the relationship between population growth and household growth. So, in your case, household demand is expected to be at 15% between 2006 and 2026 over that two-decade period. Though you're, though that is actually go at 15%, you're only expected to see about 11% population growth. So, your growth in households is exceeding your growth in population, and that's common across your region. You've actually seen, that's actually on the lower end, you're closer matched than we've seen in other communities, for sure. One other thing that we're seeing is that your senior population, though lower than some of your neighbors, is still going to be the part of your community that is increasing the fastest in the coming years. So, in 2011, which is on the far left, and 2026, which is on the far right, you've seen a 10% increase in the number of residents aged 65 and over. So, that's a, that's a pretty big change to your community. For some context, there are communities in this study that had over 40% of their community in 2026 was expected to be 65-plus. So, Clearwater is definitely younger, and I think that bears out in some of the engagement that we received and in some of our conversations we had with staff, that Clearwater is definitely a younger community than some of those around it. So, again, thinking about what this change is going to mean for a community, but recognizing that you have some time in order to make those changes to to more adapt your housing stock to meet the needs of an aging population. And so, what we heard in Clearwater and across the region is that of your older residents, many are worried about their ability to maintain larger properties and worried that they're not able to downsize because of cost or availability. One quote that we saw here is, "We are aging, and we'll soon have to give up our home. At present, there's no place to go for us in our community." This problem is the same problem facing many seniors. And that's a really common feedback from our survey and through our key informant interviews. So, for us, this highlights a need for affordable and accessible housing, particularly rental housing options. Sometimes those come with home care and semi-supported or supported living options as well. Make sure that housing that you are building or that you're approving is close to those amenities and services. As people age, they are less able to operate a motor vehicle. So, understanding that there is less public transportation across your region, there are still ways that you can make your communities more walk-friendly by locating residential and commercial uses closer to one another. Some of the ways forward in terms of planning tools and local government tools are looking, again, at those landies' decisions that prioritize multi-unit housing. Doesn't have to be big apartment buildings, can just be, you know, fourplexes, fiveplexes, small one- and two-story apartment buildings. Those are really helpful in smaller communities, and looking at how to how to connect those new developments with active or public transportation where it does exist. And a big piece that came out of this is that, you know, seniors and older folks are not necessarily looking for less bedrooms, they're looking for smaller, easier-to-maintain units. And so, that means that they don't want the yard, they don't want to have to shovel the driveway, things like that, but they still want a second or sometimes even a third bedroom so that they can have an office or craft space or a place to have grandkids and kids visit. That's really important to folks. So, highlighting those two- and three-bedroom rental units that are maybe smaller but still maintain that sort of two- or three-bedroom use. Moving on to some about your renters. So, this is a graph from across the TNRD. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of rental information from the District of Clearwater as a whole. It's just not available to us at that scale. But what we've seen through engagement feedback and through the data that we do have is that rates of rentership are increasing across nearly all age cohorts in the region. So, this graph is showing the rates of rentership in 2006 in the blue and 2016 in the yellow across all of the different age cohorts along the bottom there. And one trend you'll notice is that from five to nine and to until about 20 years old, as well as from about 30 to about 50 years old, rates of rentership have increased dramatically. And those are sort of the parents of these younger children. So, the largest jumps are in families with school-aged children, and that definitely holds true in Clearwater, where you have 85 more rental households on this census than you did in the past census. It still represents a minority of your community, but your rates of rentership are definitely increasing. And that's important because renter households are far less likely to be able to meet their housing needs than owner households. In terms of just pure income, owners in your community make about $72,000, renters make less than $40,000, though that rate is increasing. So, rates of core housing need also suggest that, that renters are less able to meet their needs, and so they're a population that is definitely needing some support from your government and from the programs that you are considering putting into effect. So, not only is rental housing becoming more expensive and more people looking for it, it's also becoming harder to find. Again, this is from the regional district as a whole. Rents in terms of cost that are categorized by CMHC are up marginally, but all of our engagement and evidence indicates that prices have escalated pretty dramatically in the last five years, and that vacancy rate is very low, less than 2% in most communities. And in a place like Clearwater, we heard from a lot of folks saying that their rental units are almost impossible to find. And what you'll see in this graph is that, you know, this sort of pink line representing a three-bedroom unit for less than $1,300 is actually a pretty reasonable price, and that's true. But this graph takes all of the different rental units across your region and puts them together. It doesn't account for which units have been lived in long-term, how many of a specific type of unit there are, and it certainly does not account for the price someone would have to pay on the open market. So, very, very likely that the CMHC numbers underestimate costs on the open market sometimes by, you know, $500, $600 pretty easily. And in a place where there is a lot of demand, those prices jump and really move around quickly. So, if you know someone who's maybe looking for a two-bedroom, they're much more than likely paying over that $1,000 mark, even though our graphs say they should be paying under. So, again, the takeaway there is more families and more people renting at increasingly expensive rates in an increasingly low vacancy environment. And that has a lot of implications for not just the lived experience of your community, but, you know, like your commercial sectors and things like that. Many employers reporting that housing directly affects their ability to attract and retain workers, and industrial expansion near Clearwater is going to put a lot of pressure on those markets. So, a quote here, "I'm very aware that our lack of rentals is affecting our town's ability to retain employees." Another one here saying that "pipeline development has created a situation of increased demand with the ability and willingness to pay higher-than-average rental prices exacerbating the situation for all rentals, especially low-income units." And then the last one talking about a severe housing crunch right now due to the transmountain pipeline. So, I think nothing you don't already know, but sometimes it's really good and really impactful to see it written down like that. So, what this highlights for us is something that's, you know, frankly, pretty similar to your seniors, the need for more dedicated, affordable, and appropriate rental options, housing for workers in key industries, housing for families and individuals, and the ways forward are pretty similar as well, prioritizing those purpose-built rentals, looking at expanding infill suites or suites or infill permissions, and protecting the stock that you already have. There's also a lot of other more specific planning tools that your staff may look at, including things like pre-zoning or inclusionary zoning, but those may be sort of the next step for you and not necessarily the the most immediate solution to to the problems in Clearwater. And it's not just renters. Owners are struggling as well. Single detached homes in the district are up about 20% after adjusting for inflation since 2010. So, you can see on this graph, though, that a lot of that increase has happened kind of in the last few years, where it's been fairly steady and then ticked up. But generally, housing is still relatively affordable in Clearwater because of your strong economy, but we're seeing that that market is becoming hard to enter for middle to low-income earners, and especially for single-income households. And that is borne out in our engagement feedback. Across our survey, 30%, 34% of all survey respondents, that's owners and renters, indicated that their current housing was unaffordable. And when we asked just renters that question, that number jumps up to over 50%, actually 65% of all renters indicating that their housing is unaffordable. And some of the most pressing concerns include, you know, cost of utilities, cost of maintaining their home, physical ability to maintain a home, and generally, cost of housing and distances to services and amenities are really important to folks. And a couple of additional quotes here, fairly standard, "Build more affordable/low-cost housing," someone actually asking directly for more affordable public housing units. And that is a big, big conversation about how you get, you know, provincial-level investment in your community, and there are things we can talk about there. If you've got questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, but that is obviously understanding the nuances of public housing, providing that housing in your community is not as easy as the local government saying they're going to do it or they're going to support it. So, for us, this looks, is a pretty standard finding, you know, the need for more of that non-market supportive, and in some cases, emergency housing options. You actually have limited applicants across the District of Clearwater, but what we're seeing is that more people are reporting people who are living with family or friends or sometimes staying in RVs. We often call that hidden homelessness, so they're folks that are not represented in a homelessness point-in-time count, but are in a tenuous housing situation. And we also saw many of the responses to the survey reporting unsafe housing conditions, reporting poor housing conditions, and and something that really like comes through is the general increase in stress and worry related to housing insecurity. It's a cost that people are increasingly less able to bear in their lives. So, the last few quotes here, someone saying that they rented here for years before they owned, and that there are many rentals that are barely livable, so talking about splemming, septic mold, mildew, and general disrepair. And then the same quote here, "Most of the units are not very updated and in need of major repairs, and as well, they can be quite expensive because availability is limited, especially for low-income seniors." So, kind of tying it all together, that non-market housing piece is the need for more of that dedicated, affordable, and appropriate rental options, like the last few, looking at alternative tenure models, so looking at those public housing or nonprofit-operated models as a way to potentially address this need. Often, those are called secured, affordable housing units because they're housing that are, it's guaranteed to be affordable in perpetuity, often through a covenant or something like that applied at the local government level. But really, it highlights a need for increased funding from senior government, and that is a huge place where you can be an advocate, even if you can't be a direct provider of that housing. And nonprofits are typically the best equipped to to provide those types of units. Some things you can do at the local level, educating community to reduce stigma around these uses, often affordable or supportive developments are not well-liked in a community. They are, you know, not for lowering property values, things like that, when, when in reality, that's not necessarily true, depends on the development. And you can also look at things like a land acquisition and disposal strategy, where you're highlighting or prioritizing disposal for nonprofit housing uses. You can do something really simple, like prioritize nonprofit development applications. When they come in, you take them from the bottom of the pile and you put them on the top. It seems like a small thing to do, but nonprofits often work with very tight timelines, really quick turnarounds, and getting that sort of like base-level support from the local government where they're, you know, prioritizing that application to be really helpful. You can also look at exploring incentive packages and other ways to encourage and support nonprofit development where possible. And the last thing I'm going to highlight to you here are just some of the groups that we identified in this study that are disproportionately affected by housing issues. So, obviously, folks who are in those low to very low-income categories are disproportionately affected, but this is looking at rates of core housing need across different household types is a great way to see who is struggling the most across your region and in your community. So, what we've got here, the rates of core housing needs total, so looking at about 13% total across the region, and then looking at families with children, without children, those tend to be the folks who are the most able to meet their housing needs. Often, that's because they have two incomes, and if they don't have two incomes, they usually have a second person who's staying at home to, who enables the the partner to earn more income in their career. So, the folks that are really struggling here are lone-parent households, so folks where there's only one income and they have the added cost of children, and singles and roommates. These are often quite young people who are just starting their careers, or they are more routinely seniors and older residents of your community. And these core, you can see here, the gray is actually the rate of indigenous core housing needs in these categories. So, folks who identify as indigenous on the census are routinely facing some of the highest rates of core housing need across your region. And that's it. So, the last few steps on this project, I believe you've got a council resolution to accept this report on your docket for today. After that, according to the Local Government Act, you need to publish the report on a website that's operated by the district. I believe that your staff will be taking care of that. We're also going to be hosting a staff training event, as well as a community forum to share the results of this study publicly. Those will both be announced in the near future. We'd like to ideally wait and do them when we can get together and safely meet in person because we feel especially for the staff training, that's the way to, you know, have the the information sink in the most. And you will have to do this report again at a certain point, whether it's in three years or five years. So, having some staff training and giving you the ability to hopefully repeat it internally or at the very least, cut the costs of going out to a consultant is is part of the goal of that training session. And with that, I'd just like to say thank you to our stakeholders across the region, especially those who participated in the survey or shared us lived experience with us, and a big thanks to the regional district and to your staff at the District of Clearwater, who were very helpful throughout the process. If you have any questions at all, I'm happy to take them now, but as you review the report and look at it over the next few months or even a couple of years, please do not hesitate to get in touch. I'm happy to help. Our commitment to the District of Clearwater does not end with this report, and we're in it for the long haul with you. So, please feel free to get in touch if you find something that interests you or if you've got a question as you work your way through it. Thank you very much, all. I will stop sharing my screen and take any questions you've got.
Hey, Counselor Aaron has a question first. I have it first. So, one of the recommendations in here that you mentioned was an increase in rental units available, but if we looked in the report, we're looking at a lower income for all of these renters. Personally, I had to go through this situation this year, and it's actually much more expensive to rent in Clearwater than it is to buy. My mortgage is substantially less, and my rent would be similar properties. So, increasing the numbers, I understand that it's designed to lower the price because there'll be more available on the market. But generally, as we've seen with the pipeline, people in Clearwater set their rent based on what they think they can get, or there's places going for 2,500 for trailers this year, right? So, my worry is if we encourage the development of more rental properties, we're not actually addressing the problem, which is income and wealth in this community.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. It's a great point. I think one of the things that we try to to get at with this study is that by highlighting those income levels and highlighting that those folks with lower incomes tend to be renting, we're trying to highlight that, you know, this is a systemic issue, right? Housing is not, cannot be dressed in a vacuum, and you're absolutely right that in addition to providing more rental units, which will hopefully alleviate the immediate burden on those who need that support in your communities, or at least help alleviate that immediate burden, then you can start to address some of those other issues as well, like income disparity, like mental health and wellness, like all of the other facets that make a community healthy and that make a community the place that that supports its residents. So, yes, I absolutely agree with you, renting in the District of Clearwater, depending on the on the home and when you bought it, can absolutely be cheaper than, sorry, owning can absolutely be cheaper than renting, but the costs right now of entering that ownership market challenge anyone who's making that sort of like median income or less, or maybe only has one income in their household. So, yeah, it's about what are the things that you can do at a local level to address that immediate concern, and then how do you parlay that into work that addresses those broader systemic issues? Absolutely, I agree with you, and thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, and just further to that, I think that really emphasizes our need to reach out to particularly higher-level governments around banking, because the obstacle there is not that the houses aren't available for sale, it's that this younger renters cannot secure mortgages. The process going through getting a mortgage right now has gotten far more complicated in just the last few years, let alone over the last decade. So, some of this, you know, the expense is literally just these people not qualifying to for bank requirements, right? Not having someone to co-sign on a mortgage, or not, you know, like, I really think we have to advocate as a council to banks and higher levels of governance, that they are the root of this problem in our community. We can put Band-Aids on it by providing rental units, all that stuff. We cannot address a larger issue that's being created by banks, our provincial government, and our federal government.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great point.
Further questions for Patty, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I wanted to make you some recent presentation. One question I had was around short-term rental, whether that was something that communities are starting to look at more in terms of their their strategy for housing. I know that obviously Clearwater is also a tourism, you know, balancing the needs of our electoral population as well as our residents, which is going to be a challenge. Was that something that we considered or looked at?
I'm sorry, Counselor Taylor, I couldn't quite hear you. Can you repeat the the question?
Yeah, cool. Sorry, I'll try and fill it out. So, just really whether the study, the impact of short-term housing, short-term rental for Airbnb and other kind of forms of, kind of seasonal and tourist housing, obviously we are a tourism community as well as the community itself, so that would be something difficult to balance, but whether that was something that was considered as a factor putting pressure on availability of rental?
Yeah, absolutely. Clearwater actually does have a relatively high rate of short-term rental uses compared to a lot of your neighbors. I mean, it makes sense, right? Clearwater is beautiful, you've got nature right there, it's a, you've got a strong sort of tourism campaign that has driven folks visiting your community, and I think that's a great thing. And your STRs, we did actually purchase a set of specialized data for the And your STRs, we did actually purchase a set of specialized data for the entire Regional District of Thompson Nicola that allowed us to look at historic STR uses and gives us a number of actual units in your community. It gives us how much that unit costs per night. It gives us how much, how many days in a month that unit was on the market or how many days was it rented? A whole bunch of information on your STR usage. And I think it is in your final report, but while I'm thinking of it, I'll see if I can pull it up really quickly.
It's based doesn't mean that you're in it?
Yeah. Yeah, it it is in the report and I I don't remember, we do give you a number there that basically says if all of these short-term rental units were turned into permanent market rentals, what would be the impact on your stock? And I I don't don't recall the number offhand, but in in most cases, the number is is bordering on negligible. So I don't think that if you sort of immediately reversed all those STRs, they would become, they would turn you into a really healthy rental market. So I I think generally in your circumstance where you've got a lot of tourism, you're probably better at current maybe pursuing sort of the business licensing path rather than going all out to encourage people to switch them back to to permanent rental units.
Do you have further? No?
I have another question. Could I ask a supplemental? Supplemental is, so with that report, was was that just for short-term rental within Clearwater? Or was it the entire region?
So we have information for the entire region, but we probably, I believe we only included District of Clearwater in your report.
Yeah, reading reading the report, you do mention forty-six active units, which is actually, it's won't be kind of over-ish. Batteries for for registered and somewhat registered B and B units, so I think.
Perfect. That's great.
And Councilor Taylor, you had a secondary question on the report and I'll get back to it.
Yes, yes, unrelated to short-term rentals, but on slide twelve, you mentioned protecting existing stock. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. So there, I mean, it's not as big a deal in the District of Clearwater, I don't think. But you do have older housing stock and often rental stock is some of the oldest housing stock in a community. There are a lot of reasons why that's the case, but a big reason is that, you know, as the as a nation federally and provincially, we stopped funding a lot of purpose-built rental and stopped encouraging a lot of purpose-built rental for the last couple of decades. We're only now sort of turning it back and starting to prioritize those types of units in their market. So that means that a lot of the purpose-built rental units, so purpose-built rentals are usually units that have typically, you know, more than four or five units in a building. And often they are designed specifically to be rental units and and they're not designed to be transferred to condos or things like that. Whereas the secondary market would be like a unit you rent out in your in your own home. So in the primary rental market, most units are, you know, built in the eighties or even the seventies. And they're they're becoming in need of major repairs, especially if they've been not kept up well. So looking at protecting that rental stock, that can mean a lot of different things. It can mean physically protecting that rental stock, so encouraging, say, a developer to to go and and repair it rather than giving them the ability to tear it down and build, say, a single detached home. That's one way to look at it. There are also programs through the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation for retrofits of older rentals, which is something you could look at and encourage maybe a nonprofit owner to to look at doing. But it can also mean not just protecting the physical units, but protecting the renters inside of those units. So if someone is going to come in, buy, say, like a a ten unit, just as an example, a ten-unit rental building and wants to turn it into condominiums or into, say, three detached homes or a series of row houses, that it's only going to have three units in it. You can put policies in place that require developers to put together a relocation plan for tenants that require some level of compensation to those tenants or that at the very least require a conversation with your staff in how you're going to replicate the conditions of affordability that were there in the existing project. So it there's a lot of different ways to protect that existing stock. And and you do have a lot of leeway as a local government to to implement different sort of types of rules and regulations. In the District of Clearwater, I mean, again, like it's something where you have to do it on a case-by-case basis and and look to see, is this new development going to be substantially more expensive than the old development, those sorts of things? It's more just like a something you can direct your staff to be cognizant of and to ensure that they keep in mind when processing applications and as decision makers, when you're approving an application for a bylaw amendment or an OCP change, things like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you again for that report. I was just wondering when it comes to the seniors who are looking to change home housing styles. And you mentioned because they wanted additional bedrooms, they didn't necessarily want a large yard maintenance. With that inventory, that does, you know, turn over to other potential markets. But what I didn't see in the report, or maybe you can help me find it, is those seniors who have got homes that have seen the twenty percent increase, they don't necessarily qualify for the assisted assisted living. So you suggesting, or I think suggested in the report that there is a different housing style. And I think we've got a unit in Clearwater that Emerald State.
Yeah, that's sort of gone nowhere at this point.
And so I didn't know if that was referenced in the report, given the fact this report may come in handy.
Sorry, the you mean that I think you're referring to the safer subsidy, which is the the seniors, usually the seniors' housing subsidy? Is that?
No, I'm talking about that the seniors who will have quite a bit of equity in their home.
Yes, yeah.
They don't need subsidies, they don't need any concessions, they just need a smaller place or or something that's more suitable. I didn't see that in the recommendations. Did you come across that or?
I mean, that's one of those things where the market is going to meet that need pretty pretty directly. And you can you can incentivize those types of units by through your zoning and through your bylaws. I are you are you're suggesting that you don't have those units in Clearwater right now? And that that would be something that people would be interested in? Or are you saying that you've got those units? Sorry, it's it's hard to hear when.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get people to speak up. Who missed Drew Watson? Just add a comment to that.
This is the, there's a fellow that I put you just with from Solid Arm that has a property in Clearwater by the hospital there. That he was going to be doing the four hundred square foot to seven hundred square foot. Were you able to connect with him?
We we weren't, no. I mean, part of the the limitations on this study is that it can be really hard to find those coming to market units. Oh, I think I maybe lost you there. Can you can you all still hear me? I think we lost your your mic, folks. But if you can hear me, I'm, it, oh, now I've got you back.
I can still hear you, Sandy, but I'm not sure if others.
Now you now you all sound great. Okay, well, now I can't hear anyone anymore, but that's okay. I will. I will just keep going because I think you can all hear me. So it can be really difficult to connect with those folks who are, you know, considering developing a very specific property or who have that very specific use in mind. Hopefully through this study, it gives your decision makers and your staff the ability to direct some of that development conversation. So when someone does come to you and says, we've got a lot that we're really interested in developing, they can then look at this report and say, ah, you know, it's it's seniors who want a two or three-bedroom unit. And let's figure out how to make a ground-oriented development that supports those needs. So hopefully it's it's coming in a little before that process.
Okay, I think you might be back. Can you hear us now?
I've got you.
Okay, sorry, we had a timeout issue with the phone.
That's okay.
So we got a little bit into your explanation there. But yeah, you want to?
I think our C A O has covered it and so I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
The group's explanation of the continuation of your comment.
Yeah, great. Perfect.
Councilor Baffert, I think you had a question?
No, it's more follow-up on Councilor, maybe on Councilor Sims I've alluded to. As you, as a senior kind of a thing, you may look at where you have, now, you may look at something that might still want two or three bedrooms, but maybe it want to be one level instead of two levels. And something with a smaller yard, but still you can have a smaller garden. Not just available, if I wanted to move in something that was one level instead of two levels, still have a little bit of room for a garden, maybe have an extra bedroom so you can have, and I'm a busy you, but just not here. And you, I, you know, personally, you'd want to sort of create, sell your place and buy the other place, so you're still an owner. Because as a senior on a pension, you can't afford to rent. And really, a fixed income, the rental here is so high, if you sell it at home, you can't afford to rent. And you can't afford to move out of Clearwater because if you move south, everything is worse to buy or rent.
Yeah. Yeah, we call those units that you're describing often ground-oriented units. And that it's still, people are reticent to move, especially folks who have lived in a big rural property. They're really reticent to move into an apartment building, right? What they want is the door that opens to the outside, they want a small garden, they want a place to maybe take the dog to go to the bathroom, those sorts of things. And there are units that are really hard to find, not just in rural communities, but across the province right now. And I think that's something that you can look at incentivizing through your bylaws, through your zoning. So looking at changing the minimum lot sizes so that you can have a smaller lots and smaller units on those lots. You can look at encouraging row houses, duplexes, quadplexes, even sort of like five, five-plex little developments, things like that. There are models out there and I think it's a really valid use of your, it's it's a really important thing that you can look at. And I think that this report definitely supports the conclusion that those are units that are in demand across the region and in Clearwater.
They're not just being built, they're just not being built yet.
No, I'm just wondering where it says it in the report.
Oh, where does it say in the report?
Yeah, so can you let me know where that is referenced in the report? Because it is, I think it's really relevant for Clearwater. And I do think that we've got, you know, some of the data that we've received from other agencies. We we actually seem to have a higher population of seniors that must be referenced in this report.
Sure. So my guess is that it's likely in section, there's likely some of it touched on in the section on demography, which highlights how your population is changing and getting a little bit older. And there's also likely some of it in the sort of housing needs sections, which are near the end. Those reference things like affordability as well as the number of bedrooms. One of the things we don't put in your report is the number of new units that you will need to build to match demand. But what we do put in is the number of, or sorry, the type of new units you need in order to match demand, right? So we don't say things like you need to build forty new single detached homes between now and twenty-twenty-six in order to meet the demand of your community. What we actually give you is more of a bedroom count metric. So like, you know, we need this many more two bedrooms and this many more three bedrooms. And that's because the form and character that those bedrooms take is up to you as a council and up to you to decide through your OCP and through your bylaws. So I think that's kind of where you're you're looking at there. And then the other piece to consider is that the way those projections are built is looking at the current demand, so the demand as of twenty sixteen and and as of twenty twenty, which we can catalog through a couple of metrics and projecting forward to twenty-twenty-six. That does not account for changing market preferences. It does not account for things outside of the control of our projections. And what you're going to, you might see over the next five years is that maybe our projections are pretty far off or maybe you had more seniors than you expected. So that I think that's one of the reasons why the provincial government has mandated that you continue to conduct the study at least every five years. It's because those needs change, they're iterative. And this is the first in many reports like this that you were going to be doing. So in the grand scheme of planning and in community development, five years is a really short amount of time. And we have the time to to go back and readjust based on what you find over the next few years. And maybe this report isn't perfect or accurate in some ways and we can go through and we can tweak it when the next version of the report comes out. So it's the starting point, not the endpoint here.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just noting one thing in the report on the categories for what you're considering seniors here. In fact, of course, we've had different age ranges used there. I think that kind of skewed it for from our past knowledge versus the metrics or the age ranges that you're using in there. And I think that might explain some of some of the other counselors' sort of questions about differences there. Yeah, thanks for explaining this, basically, two thousand sixteen and twenty twenty twenty-one numbers projected forward. But that may not necessarily affect the future as far as we can, I think that that gives us a pattern of past housing type builds here. And we've already seen an evolution of that slightly with the affordable housing here in Clearwater. If there's no further questions, thank you for your report and thank you for your time. And yes, step one done, now we'll.
Step one, yeah, great.
Do this, and then three to five and see, see how, you know, how well your predictions.
Well, we'll see.
And whether or not we're going to buy a lot of tickets based on.
Yeah, I I got a suspicion I'm not going to be very good in the in the next long run, but we'll we'll hope for the best.
Hey, hey, we learned something. We learned a lot. And it gives us something to start encouraging, you know, maybe for future outcomes.
You got it. Okay. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it.
So we do have the recommendation under eight-eighty that Councilor Stephen adopted, District of Clearwater, Thompson Nicola. He does a housing needs report dated January twenty twenty-one. And that is what we posted on the District of Clearwater website and made publicly accessible. Comment. Salute by Councilor Baffert, seconded?
No, I want to comment. This to me, like, ticked off about this. I really like, this to me is downwelling. They're, they want us to do this every five years. It's a report of a bunch of stuff that they're like, oh, you can tangentially affect it by maybe encouraging a type of development. We don't develop here. Developers develop and like, they're not incentivizing them, they're not approaching developers. They're asking us, municipality, every five years to do something that should be dealt with at the provincial level. This is BS. But anyways, like, I'm fine with adopting it, this is what we have to do. But how do we get back to the province that they can adopt?
My take on it.
I I I think your, a version of your sentiment has been noted multiple times over and in multiple places. And yeah, I mean, there's 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 only useful data, there's only using good data. Should should every community in Clear, in the in First Columbia, having, be having to eventually be aligned and creating the support. I'm glad that we went in with the T N R D as a group in order to accomplish this. I know some communities did it on their own and they did a good job, but yes, it is, that is down, definitely.
Further topic question?
So it is interesting to, so to receive it and to post it, does this say that we agree with it?
I don't.
Well, it does receive at the doctor.
It says receive, yeah.
It looks like receiving a lot of the information.
It's receiving a doc. Or receiving a doc, yeah, that is required when things come.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we have to do, but.
And what happens if we just receive the information?
It has to be adopted at some point. The one, I mean, where would you like to classify the future detail in this? And and he, as as he admitted in the report, that it's it's not a, the projection is not a precise science. And a lot of the data, especially noted the page where it breaks down needs by family. There was a heavy emphasis on indigenous, single parents, indigenous needs there. And quite obviously, that's. and quite obviously that skewed more towards the entire P N R D versus what we, what's represented in Clearwater.
I guess what I'm wondering is, and just as a supplement to this, and, and on the heels of it, is that, that there is all this information, it is a download onto, uh, the municipal government, but I don't see where they went in and they spoke to units where, we have places, you know, up and down this valley, where they're still on a pot of water, and they're being charged. And I'm just wondering, where does the province step in on that? And so, to receive an adopt is almost like closing a blind eye. And almost, there needs to be some sort of, um, a commentary from Counselor Baffert. I recognize, um, the process that we're being asked to participate with for the purpose of discussion, and, and certainly Counselor Herring, in acknowledgement of your assessment. And, and, I'm, I'm throwing that out there, but there are big gaps, and I don't think that they're on us. And I think it's actually a pollen effect that they're in that, that blind eye.
That's about it. Um, each part of Counselor Herring, when it first came out, I know we had that conversation about this is not right, you pay for it the first year, and then every five years you're supposed to do it again. You don't cover it. Um, one of the things about the wording as far as receive and adopt, it's interesting. I had that conversation with senior staff within the last seven or eight days. And one of the things that you may wanna look at, and seems to work, would be you can adopt it for consideration, or you can receive it for consideration, but it mean you're implementing it, it doesn't mean you're whatever, but you adopt it for a consideration. Somewhere down the road, you may use some of the information in it. So, it makes it more, clarify that it doesn't raise expectations of people. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that as well, I mean, it's like pre-interpretation, not in this report, it's how it's meant. Like, there's nothing in here that's actual, uh, which is unique to implement it, you don't have to follow recommendations, but I think, I think, I think the word adopt is interesting, because it's really just, we're receiving and accepting the report, as opposed to adopting. Adopting means there's something in action. I don't think there's anything in here that requires us to put it, anything in action.
No, it's not. Um, so, there's not a second or, so we can, staff can be heard in the discussion. Um, so you, you could revise it to say, and adopt for consideration, as we talked about, like, if you were something else, right? But there, um, Counselor Taylor is correct, there's no actual action, other than the data set that staff wants to be checked off.
Even if there is some action, if you adopt it for consideration, doesn't mean the action has to be carried out.
Yeah, and the other thing that's here, I mean, we have, and the council has picked up on it, is that it's already completely outdated. Yeah, because of COVID and trans mountains already pulled out, so it's actually no data report, but-
So, um, so we had a mover on that, so it hasn't been seconded, so somebody wanted to change it. Something amended to adopt it for consideration.
Move it, sorry.
I didn't.
You did, yeah.
I don't know, I can, I'll change it to that, if Counselor-
Yeah, so, and then, is somebody like to second it with that?
Or let Counselor Herring do it.
All right, Counselor Sim, okay. So, further discussion, um, only comment out of A T F. I agree with everything that's been said here, it's already outdated, um, but it does give us some data to take out there in the public, to have a conversation, um, whether or not to, you know, there is, the predictions of the future here are fairly weak, so, understanding, um, some of the things, like the comments about seniors wanting to move out, but still have three bedrooms, even if it's a smaller unit, and ground floor accessibility, I mean, that's the no-brainer that I see, because that's exactly what, uh, Evergreen seniors has built for their housing, and people love it. It just doesn't exist in this town. Um, our issues are more developers and ownership versus rental, that's the situation.
Yeah, and, and the cost of, current, current prices right now of cost of building.
There, I will comment that there are, um, developers that may take this power and actually use it to get their loan and to get going on their own.
And that, and that's where data can help.
And just, and that's one of the reasons, is because a really big core part of us, like, there's, there's a lot of people that can move into Evergreen Acres, but because of some of their financial means and their house equity, you know, it's a very good way of living, and yet it's taking up space for the intended purpose, and yet we want our seniors to age in place. And you're right, this type of report is used as data, and because it's not registered in there, you know, that, that, it's not helpful for developers, so that, that's why I feel a bit reluctant, and I hope that we can maybe-
Put a caveat on that, too.
Or, I do, excuse me, sorry, we have a couple of recent calls, um, before Christmas and one after Christmas, that people are actually looking for landings, or water to be able to live out. So, I can now send this report. Here it is, the one's need, do what you will, right?
Further discussion, unlike Mayor Blackwell mentioned, row condominiums or whatever else, that are single-level type things, are really a new thing, and they're really hard for seniors, with the carport out front, so, because they can get out without showing it. Single-level things, they're right there.
And it, it, we, me, we have two types of housing in Clearwater, well, three things. We have crappy trailers, or, we have special ones, um, and then we have single houses, and we have a very small sector of what is basically apartments, whether they be ground long apartments or whatever. It, it, it average town, five or six thousand has most townhouses everywhere that, that I grew up in, in Burnaby and stuff, and they were a new invention, and we, we just haven't evolved, uh, at that level of housing. Uh, further comments or questions? If not, call the question, I'll look at the paper. Stop for consideration, thank you. Um, we have no delegation, uh, mayor's report, I'll keep it short, of our roundtable discussion this morning. Um, not much going on, we hadn't actually had one for a year there, as far as that, it all went. Posted by Mike Thompson of the Pretty Year Basin, but, um, lots of work still going on there. V C Wildfire, expect to keep most of their staff from last year on for this year. Jim Jones has retired, I don't know, on Friday, after thirty-five years, I believe, is what, what noted that. Um, I think it's actually forty years.
I think it's close to forty.
Yeah, it is, uh, so, um, I think maybe a, a letter of congratulations for retirement to go up to Jim, or hard at least anyway, thank you for your service to the community, would be great to have that acknowledged out there. Um, and then, uh, other than that, um, was on the first half of the call with Minister of Municipal Affairs on Friday, most of it was to do with COVID update, um, a lot of calls on the line from C A Os and mayors from around the region, asking for better information from our health authorities, more timely information, more useful information than health authority. Uh, and then, uh, in the last, we mentioned on sort of timelines on France, and, um, a lot of thank yous for the COVID recovery fund, um, and a lot of reports on how those are being used. And other than that, since last time I was here, the other major thing I did was T N R D on the fourteenth, and it's all about lack of, anyway, um, moving on to council reports, Counselor Baffert.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Um, I also attended the wildfire roundtable call this morning, and, and not too much going on, but I think we found interesting was, I second Mayor Blackwell's comment, if they're gonna have the same level of staff, or I think that's gonna be really good, and I think we'll probably look at something in April, late April or May, to look at what the possible fire situation may be as far as, better idea as far as whether to see some backhoes. So, we'll be another short call, I'm sure, somewhere in early May. Um, kept up on email, did quite a bit of reading on the COVID relief stuff again, and had some conversations with staff about things that we may be able to use for that. We read all that, and I read the project management thing that came out, and it was actually a very good read. It's worth the time to spend to read it, there's some parts in there, I think, for larger projects would be a good assistance for us to use, and staff has said they did use it for some of the projects this last year, and that pretty much completes it.
Thank you, Counselor Prizzle, thank you for sitting in the hot chair for two meetings.
Oh, you're so welcome. Um, I have to stay in a quiet couple of weeks, I, but I just wanted to note that we also, since we're not to here with Zoom meetings, I finally got the seniors to start Zooming. Good. A senior Zoom meeting, and there's a few technical problems, and now I have, like, about ten others going to go to attend the next meeting, so, they're on board.
Just some time for the rest of us to get up on the, you know. Oh, thank you for that. Counselor Herring. Nothing to report. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kennedy, of course, is gonna call the way it works to work. Counselor Sim.
Um, first of all, I just want to, uh, put out a call for thanks to our entire, uh, staff and team at the O C, and to welcome our newest team member. It's really nice to, to have you, and thank you for choosing Clearwater. I also wanna thank the, um, uh, the hospital and the medical clinic for looking after our mayor. I'm really grateful, and glad you're okay.
I have met so many people, it's, um, yeah, it's been, uh, an eye-opening month or so, and, uh, yeah, a heck of a learning experience on some of the gaps of community cohesiveness and the, the need to open our arms and, um, there, and I've met some really neat people, because they were sticking needles into me and, you know, doing nasty things to me, but we had great conversations about their lives and why they moved to this area, and, and, and unfortunately, at the hospital, it's the first time I've met them, and I've never seen them in public at any other point, so we have some gaps as far as we need to, to welcome people.
No, and that just goes to show, thank you for being the mayor, that she's in all circumstances to welcome people, so-
Tell me about yourself.
Um, so those are just the attitudes, the gratitudes, and we're just glad to have you back in the chair, and, uh, Counselor Prizzle certainly did you, did well by you and did a marvelous job. Um, and then the only other thing to report is just, uh, having done a feedback to our V C Transit fellow, and, um, uh, they have taken that into consideration, and will adjust when they might have money to reprint the guide, so.
And thank you for following up on that, too, uh, yeah. The, uh, today's, um, um, just, I'll wait for that, so, I'm gonna have to do it. Uh, Counselor Taylor, you have internet. Are you working from home now?
Uh, yeah, I am, which makes it challenging getting here, for one of those things. Uh, but yeah, I'm back, back to my company, we're back to, um, good internet, for the most part. Um, and so, yeah, it definitely makes it easier for me to, like, make two examples, without having to go somewhere and download them. Um, so, no, like, official meetings the last couple of weeks, um, but I have had some of those, kind of catch-ups and check-ins, uh, with, uh, the shareholders, and we have some budget workshops, so, looking forward to the session tomorrow, hopefully we'll continue to make progress on that budget for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, excellent, yeah, thank you for the work of the last one or so, I've, I've been reading the emails, and solving a lot of problems, sorting out a lot of, um, ways to make things understandable for our officers. Uh, so, turning to committees of the whole, I know, A, um, finance committee, the whole meeting.
Yeah, so, uh, a recommendation of the minutes, the finance, the finance department committee of the whole meeting held January nineteen twenty twenty-one would be with the, I'll make that recommendation.
Who's by Counselor Prizzle, seconded by, thank you, Counselor Herring, all those in favor? Thank you. Oh, you moved in two seconds, it's like everybody's still stuck here, right?
So, for the next one, I'll move, the recommendation, the Council of Through Staff's recommendation that's outlined is able for the twenty twenty-three and equivalent to inventory, and that funding for the S P, S P B A, uh, compressor is approved in twenty twenty-one, in front of you.
Do we have a second or? Counselor Baffert, thank you, all those in favor? Thank you, and that passes. Um, moving on, committee of the whole reports, seconded.
Uh, meeting February sixteen.
Never mind. Uh, infrastructure, Counselor Sim.
March second.
Q, uh, parts and records with Counselor Kennedy will be due April sixth, minus an audience, audience?
At least you didn't say idiot.
Uh, so, we had a meeting, uh, this, uh, yesterday, uh, and we also have our workshop tomorrow. Um, I'm not sure what the next one will be after that, but, um-
Thank you, moving to, I have fourteen, then it's committee reports, Counselor Herring, joint service to the next meeting is March eighth. Trail staff force, Taylor.
Oh, uh, so-
February eighth.
Thank you.
No problem. Counselor, Counselor, oh, sorry, I, I, you gotta click forward, yeah. Anyway, Counselor Prizzle, do your tab.
Your council was still waiting to get together with them, it's a bit of a, a draw.
I, I think they're, they're at school today, would they have a break on?
Tomorrow they're off, it's, it's, uh, a makeup day tomorrow, and Friday is the protein day.
Pro day, the day that they roll exam, some of them are today.
Monday is today, yeah. And then the new term starts tomorrow, just in time for a day off Friday.
Yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, fantastic. Uh, moving on to fourth and worker group, Counselor Baffert.
Thank you, uh, the next meeting is to be announced, but there is a recommendation that the minutes of the fourth and worker group need be held October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a second or, Counselor Baffert? Counselor Taylor, all those in favor? Uh, Counselor Prizzle, community, active development, past.
We've got meetings later today, this evening, at six thirty.
Thirty, that's hopefully, uh, or is it here?
It's here.
If they're looking. Right, counselors, sort of, I have fifteen community representation reports, Counselor Sim.
Uh, we still have the minutes from the November fourth meeting, uh, there were draft minutes that would have been, uh, uh, tomorrow's meeting, but I believe that meeting has been postponed.
Um, I know, well, we can be forest commission, Counselor Baffert.
I think there's a, no meeting scheduled, that, uh, we scheduled one in H C.
Yeah, there, uh, the society was today, or members of the society was planned for it today, on community forests, um, planning the role of spring, spring requests for, for grass, and, and that will go up since you stayed. But then they'll be putting up, uh, I believe, next year, another, another thousand dollars. That's a force, I was sixteen, A, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, COVID nineteen restart funding. Is there a rule, do you like to speak on that?
Because the money was, uh, received in, uh, twenty twenty, we're required to recognize as revenue, so we're recommending that support to be brought into the, the budget of the operating year in twenty twenty.
Any questions to staff, before we get a lower in a second or on that? Counselor Prizzle.
That was just so bad, it was easily executed, right? Otherwise it ends up in surplus. And then it gets, or other way, yeah, and technically, well, it's, it's, you know.
Would somebody like to move a second or? Moved by Counselor Herring, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor? Thank you. V C Transit, amended annual operating agreement, there is a recommendation, are any questions to staff?
I just wanted to make comments, that it's really nice, people actually have the type of, that we don't. I, it just, I, we do see, I just have to say, and then I actually saw for myself, and, thank you, so, yeah, I just want to go.
Counselor Herring, is this, so this isn't a three-year deal they were looking for, or actually, you know, this?
Yeah, it is.
So, we're submitting a three-year, based on this?
You are, but you have a termination, you have the ability to terminate, a hundred eighty, yeah, a hundred eighty. So, either we, uh, take the twenty-seven thousand one hundred eleven, or we take the twenty-seven thousand one hundred eleven, and then if you want to terminate, then you would have to give a hundred and eighty pieces, and I don't know how that would affect the twenty-seven thousand one hundred eleven.
So, the eighty-four thousand dollars, is it advised, that is the District of Clearwater's portion? Well, I'm just wondering, uh, uh, because I would have liked to have seen what the T N R D's portion is.
So, we give the eighty-four thousand, but the hundred thousand dollars, like, are drafted from the, from the-
Yeah, and that I think is like a hundred and whatever, one and twenty-seven, works out to eighty-four.
Yeah, eighty-one, forty-nine is the agenda, the local, uh, government share of, they keep out, and then you-
So, eighty, sorry, so, so, where's the T N R D?
Well, they would have a forty percent share, and-
Oh, the eighty-two, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing, if, just, I, and maybe in a Shepherd's, you know, or maybe it's not clear. It's just in this, eighty-four thousand dollars for revenues that are fifteen thousand dollars. It's difficult. I, I guess, I'm not sure if this service is working.
So, my suggestion to counsel with, and at this point now, would be, is that you would-
So my suggestion to come with an, and at this point now would be is that you accept, because we are required to accept it. We were shortly done last week, or the end of the week that we chatted with, so I have to be transit. And then you put out a service to the community, um, so that's how you've done it in the past. How many people are using it? How many people will use it? And go back to that, they're on board.
So just supplemental to that is the reason I want the T N R, to know about the T N R D is because a large part of that service stretches the black tool to V D M, whereas our core connectors really are service areas. So if they, if the T N R D is forty percent of that eighty-four thousand, it makes it, it, it changes things for me. So I just want to verify what, what we're at.
Right, and, and is the value connector paid for over the question?
It's not the T N R D. They're trying to just format. I just can't remember the share region.
Councilor Herring?
So I just want to specify, I have, in no way do I want to take away train in the service in the community. I'm just worried that if we sign up for three years, like, what can we change within that three years if things aren't working? If things change dramatically because of.
Well, annually they'll, they'll come to council and have the same conversation every year and fall.
But if we decide that we disagree with them?
Then we submit your.
Eighty days.
Yep.
So there is a go-to sale for you and, and in one hundred eighty days, in order to wrap up. If something, if it ends up being that, that's.
We also are looking at, as part of the code of research funding, our, our, our side of the loss of revenue can be covered by that.
So.
Go ahead.
Um, this total revenue is almost sixteen thousand dollars. Is that this COVID year or is that a normal year?
I'm going to jump to the COVID year.
It, it's not, it's not very much. Never been much, but I mean, tragedy would have just.
Yes.
Darkness has always been high risk, but I was, supported by the community for these years.
Yeah, forever. And I think too, if I remember off the top, I had eighty percent.
It'll probably be a bigger deal than, than the worst, but.
No.
Uh, may I ask, truly, you, you, um, I'm not, page one forty-nine, I'm at the time, that those numbers are giving up our all three routes. So that would include the T N R D. Um, we can announce D C Transit, if we would be allowed to allocate it to just a Clearwater portion. But then this is the full transit route, and then we can run it from the, from period A to B. Well, that would include the T N R D. If we took it right off the top.
Yeah, so we have a question with the T N R D, if they can use some of their restart, um, Ms. Madlin was community about. If they can use some of their code restart money to supplement the revenue loss from there, sorry, that we want.
Noting that the T N R D restart money is cash per dollar, which was very cool, very similar to what we go out and have. It's arguing with Clearwater. They only got about nine hundred thousand dollars from all of the T N R D, you know, to revenue. So it isn't very much of a cost that sets their taxation costs that aren't code related or actually. Further questions?
Um, so we, if you want to, okay, fifty-three, your finance and audit agenda could actually give you a full breakdown of where the eighteen thousand comes from.
So let's try and look at that and let you found it, which would be three things.
Miss Deborah had broken it out. I just remembered that when we were talking, anyway, it's in the somewhere that was pretty well highlighted.
So almost forty-five, so it would be that.
Oh, T N R D portion that's twenty seven? Thirty-eight to seventy-six. Okay, so we're, we're realistically fifty-eight, change, thirty-eight now.
But if we let, but even that is reduced because of the twenty-seven thousand that they're offering for the first year.
I don't know how the twenty-seven would be allocated.
So all of it might be allocated to the T N R D.
Well, the net cost here is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight for two twenty twenty-one.
For the general services, something that's projected, you can link to it, twenty-four thousand, your cost?
So the general services just separate from the, like, connector and the interlude, right? Those are all individual costs. And so the valid connector has a cost of twenty-seven, and that cost of T N R D is twenty-seven thousand. And that cost for the interlude is twenty-four thousand. So that would be, that adds to the fifty-eight?
Yeah, so the interlude is the one that I think council should really be focusing on. We started at two thousand seventeen, but it was sixteen thousand dollars and it's up to twenty-four now. So it's actually jumping. So if you're wanting to have a view of which service with a, with council, turn it all together. I would be, um, I think I'm trying to think of that.
I mean, for me, the valid connector is the one I know people depend upon going to councils twice a week. That's the one that I think probably, for me, is the most usage might be done on it. And most critical for those people being able to get in and out for two or three hours. The community does, we can look at it three times a day and it's quite a bit of money. And the general services, I guess, something, you know, stuff, it's not any particular service, that's just the cost of the buses and the maintenance or anything else.
Well, if you were to get rid of general, you wouldn't have the valid connector or it wouldn't be a problem.
Right, it wouldn't be anything. And that's the issue. So, uh, thoughts really quickly to, to get with the staff is to move this recommendation, but also about second recommendation. That we will get a traffic survey in the next year or something.
I, I think in our meeting, we had also asked for better data, that, that, um, the transit manager was surprised that we couldn't get exact ridership. And I think that that information will guide some of our decisions. And then we look at that hundred and eighty days, that is that, um, inner loop that is expensive and it's just not being utilized the way it was intended. You know, let's, let's look at where it is needed and what's the value connector. We've all spoken at this table about the value to it. So maybe, uh, we move the motion, um, to get, go forward if it happened back in the year with the letter, just, it, with our expectations that we could get that data. Would that be fair, Councilor?
Yeah, and then it's not yet for three years. So in the, in the, the last comment I made before I asked, was there's some seconders on this, is that there is a private company looking with overlap on most of the services and that's the same way the ground operates. Councilor, about a quick question, staff. Can you do this for, I mean, in here it says from April first to March thirty-first. Can you do this right here now? You have to have a three-year agreement.
Uh, I don't know that. Um, we did have a conversation from the day after company. Um, the data that we've been wanting to have collected, he's looked into it and it's not as simple as we have been told in the past. So he's finding, he's learning himself on sort of the challenges of a small system. Um, but they are working together with, um, the manager of the operating company that are small town D P. Um, to, um, to get a better understanding how they can get those numbers for the municipality and the payment of the transit.
So I think the bottom line for me on this is that there is one hundred days, uh, one hundred eighty days to get out of this agreement. Um, a lot of it, so the contract realistically, and with, you know, possible penalty, um, of the twenty-seven thousand dollars or others is that at any point within a hundred days, we can get down to eighty days, we can get out of this. So, um, I'm not too conflicted on the, the three-year part. As much as needing to move forward with something right now, uh, but expecting everybody to do that, there needs to be a review of this because, yeah. We're, it, it is, it is a, a, apparently expensive per cost, per capita program and that really isn't serving people the way it's been leading. Um, move around second, obviously, for getting it underway. I know. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Herring, seconded by Councilor Taylor, all those in favor? Regent Lee? Fair, fair comment, but I'm glad we had the discussion, um, because, uh, it sounds just never friendly because it is so outside, but there are definitely people who are telling, that desperately need it. My question, are we giving them the right? Uh, moving on to item C, twenty twenty capital and operating project status. There are a couple of recommendations there.
So this is the board and the staff report so that we can, uh, take the recommendations and implement them into the, um, fire your financial plan uh, so the audit process can carry on. I mean, you're in, um, work can be done by the director of finance and the staff.
So these are basically, I was like, hey, we have, uh, discussed this kind of audit meeting. Um, so the first recommendation that I really don't want to read all out. Would somebody like to remove the recommendation that Councilor Venders' twenty twenty-five year financial plan for twenty twenty? Councilor Venders' has followed item A through P. Thank you, Councilor Taylor, seconded by Councilor Prizzle, all those in favor? And then the second recommendation is the Councilor's number twenty twenty-five year financial plans for twenty twenty operating expenditures. The expenditures has followed item A through P. That was by Councilor Herring, seconded by Councilor Stafford, all those in favor? While that was made more pain, painless than it was meant to be. And then the third recommendation has a balance of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the trans mountain private contribution of three hundred and ninety-two thousand for maintenance and transport to the road and capital reserve. Questions, comments? Move to second or? Uh, moved by Councilor Herring, seconded by Councilor Taylor, all those in favor? And moving on to bylaws. Call my name by law. Give me a second, so I can find the page. Uh, yeah. On the page.
Well, so.
That's why I'm here. Anyway. Uh, so we have bylaw number two three three, twenty twenty-one, District of Clearwater Volunteer Fire Department, uh, recommendation. I mean, must I move the recommendation or does that? Moved by Councilor, yeah, definitely by Councilor Prizzle. This is a Clearwater bylaw number two three three, twenty twenty-one, a bylaw for continuation of regulations of the volunteer fire department of District of Clearwater. Whereas the community charter allows the municipality may establish and regulate services for the community, including a fire department. And whereas Council of the District of Clearwater wishes to define the powers and authorities and responsibilities of the fire department. Therefore, the Council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembled and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater Volunteer Fire Department Regulations by Law Number two three three, twenty twenty-one. And the D C Fire Code and Fire Services Act and the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation one fifty-two, twenty nineteen Environmental Management Act are all as amended or replaced, are deemed to be enforced and effective within the district. All those in favor? Thank you. And that is adopted. And then a bylaw two four seven is, uh, from earlier stage. Uh, there's a recommendation of bylaw number two four seven, twenty twenty-one, a bylaw that's amended District of Clearwater Water Eater.
Twenty eighty-five?
Twenty eighty-five. I have faster pages. You don't have that. I was going to somebody else's stuff, thank you. Uh, very. I'm making my side with, oh, coffee. Okay, uh, so I have the bylaw here, something to remove, seconded by, moved by Councilor. Stafford, seconded by Councilor Prizzle. District of Clearwater bylaw number two four seven, uh, twenty twenty-one. Bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater Water User Fees for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, bylaw number two one nine. Whereas section one ninety-four, the community charter allows council by bylaw to pose fees payable in respect of funding the water services. Now therefore, in the useful council of District of Clearwater, province of this country, in an open meeting assembled and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited in District of Clearwater Water User Fees twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, bylaw number two one nine, twenty nineteen, amended by law number two four seven, twenty twenty-one, all those in favor? Thank you. And then, uh, moving on to correspondence. Uh, a request for support for the bus services in our office that I mentioned earlier. And move the recommendation, seconded by Councilor Herring. Um, so all those in favor? And we'll get to that letter real quick. And I believe it's already sorted about the T N R D as well.
Very T N R D, they sound, and I wonder how that's.
Yeah, yeah, sounds like a great idea. Uh, correspondence items, letter, um, if you'd like to speak in any of these. I have a main letter to Mayor Horgan, we found, Councilor Sten, Councilor Prizzle.
I just wondered if that was brought up at the T N R D?
Uh, I don't think it was in time for that meeting, but, um, Councilor Noah Hart did speak to it because he was there during the presentation.
I'm in favor of the question, uh, not, I, the letter was awkward for me to sign on with. Um, but the intent is because it, it would help. So I'd be interested to see what the T N R D does and then follow up in essence.
Yeah, I would agree that I'd like to see somebody else's personal word and letter and maybe follow that tactic. Any further comments on this one?
So are they asking for, for that? I thought it was a confirmation.
They are asking for, we've sent forward.
Um, I am the interior health and I'm the chief of Nicola, regional district building inspection services. We have no other to the motion other than that, uh, we need the ratification of the, uh, the sick resources and all the resolution that we did Friday, you know, I have a copy here. Uh, that the District of Clearwater direct Maribor will provide the letter of support for sick resources listed by building partnerships, including our grant. Please, a feasibility study for water, or sorry, for waste molecular recycling program, they would be saying that the D C conditions, clean energy program. They have a move for a second here, along with, by Councilor Herring, seconded by Councilor Taylor, all those in favor? Interesting project, lots of discussion, um, valley wide office. But at this point, it's just a feasibility study and, um, we've got a long way to go.
Okay, um, and we have no in council today. Folks, it's been great. Thank you, folks. That was very significant.
Is that you did it, Jen?
Page one, one to lose.
Anything we can say?
Yeah, it's true. Heard we get paid more, we admit it, kind of, we are. And a thirty-one second. And remember, that was all recorded.